So sometimes if people have been thinking about it, but you have these kind of, you know, the safety nets in place, the education surrounding them, don't go ahead and do it. It creates that environment where they feel safe.
Do you have any numbers on what kind of success rate you have on businesses that you more or less incubated on this on that sheet?
Right here, right here, yeah. One page with a lot of information.
I just opened the back.
Yeah. Yeah, take a look at that. Thank you. So anyway, we have had a contract, this is our first year to have a contract, it would be all to do signage tourism and marketing. I did bother drawing a new one up because I was hoping we might find a way to merge everything together. So at some point, whatever you decide, we can do a separate contract again. It's been great knowing what you expect from us to follow that. Anyway, okay. Any other?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, sir. Yes, how are you guys doing today? We have submitted a request for funding for three thousand dollars for marketing and advertising for next year's festival.
Three, what do you say?
Three.
Three?
I believe it's the same amount for this as for the festival next year, next summer. Obviously, there's not a lot of things going on here in 2020, so anything we received or were approved for last year, we did not use, so we did not take it. All of ours are done by submitting invoices for marketing and advertising and then using that money for that. Now, anything summer, so we didn't use it.
I hope next year I got that in here, do we?
Alright.
Anybody have any questions?
We're gonna have a little settler next year, huh?
As far as we know. We were gonna have this, we were gonna have this year too, as far as we know. Obviously, we believe that by next summer, things will be quote unquote back to normal. And we hope, and there'll be some differences, I'm sure, as we go forward with this, but yes, we're planning on having just as large a festival as we can normally have for old settlers next year in 2021.
My oldest old settler celebrations in Indiana, one of them in the United States.
It's the oldest in Indiana, I'm not sure about the United States. It was the longest continual running festival in Indiana, obviously we broke that streak, but.
You broke that?
Yeah. No, I don't think we're gonna hold that against us, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Yep.
Certainly put you in the, in the, in the mix.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
For every consideration.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Highway? I can read this one to you, so everyone knows what else is in the mix here. Gentlemen, the highway budget, the highway department would like to request funding in an amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the 2021 county budget. These monies will be used in our chip seal program to pay for needed materials. With the decreased funding in MVH, motor vehicle highway monies, due to reduced fuel usage because of COVID-19, there will be greater need in this next year for additional outside funding. I am particularly concerned that we do not slip a year with our road improvement program. I believe that we are in good position for keeping the roads at better than average user, user rating, but in my opinion, requires our yearly attention to keep these roads upgraded. In the past, the bike fed has accounted for twenty to twenty-five percent of our annual expenditure for materials to do chip and seal. Over the past years, added funds have been accounted for a hundred and twenty-four miles of roads that have been able to be improved. This amounts to about twenty-two percent of our hard surface roads. In my opinion, this is a very worthwhile return on investment. I think we all agree with that. Council did not approve it. We put it in line this year for the money for roads and they didn't feel like we needed it, so they took it out. And so we have that money left over, don't we, Beth? Three thousand dollars for the old settler's advertising. I'm sure that if we do not get to continue doing that, our roads will go to the sand. We have had many years now of upward root car, I hate to see it stacked. Okay, I think we're done with those, we're ready for custodian Keith.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
This is free for the pop we can, you guys. First is the drop box labeling. And the pack full writing, you guys, there's some different types of options. I just wanna kinda get an idea, what you would like to see. As for labeling, I was thinking something like, just the label says Carroll County Courthouse, collection box only on the sides. Also attached, I had my part-time custodian on one of the photos. I had her step out there, basically for where she would be standing. No, it's not. So. So I, so basically, this is where the running dips in, then comes back out, and it would be up against this side here, there's gotta be enough room to get to the backside to withdraw any of the metal that's in there. That's basically where it'd be, be a little further, but as you can see from the camera, thirteen, you can get good frontal view, you know, if anybody was to vandalize or whatever else. So it'd be in a very secure location for that purposes, be a little bit more forward versus not standing in front of the sign.
Or do you violate any, well, or, or the?
The ADA, ADA caught Claude. Guidelines is that there has to be a five-foot square at the beginning and end of the ramp. So there is, I mean, you have the approachway, the landing in front of the door, and you have the concrete driveway at the end. So is ADA compliant?
Passing between pedestrians?
It doesn't specify on that. I have not found it yet on that part of the ADA. The only thing I've read was upon was the five-foot square on the front and end of the ramp.
So it's not gonna be on the ramp, it's gonna be on the inside?
It's gonna be on the inside, yes, it's gonna be on the inside. Yeah, so you see where these two rails, where the walkway is, and then it jets out and in back, they'll be inside that little nook there.
I think that no good thing for like, two people are coming, one coming out, and one see they'll come up, one pull over, and they'll pass, so backing down.
I can see if that goes against the ADA placing that.
I bet you that's true.
From whatever it upon. So if that doesn't work, and that's, I mean, of course, common sense, you look at it and you say, yes, that's from the passing for a handicap, wheelchair, or whatever it may be. I get that, so if that's not the location, I guess that'll be another conversation for later, for where we actually wanna position this.
I would suggest that after Greenwich Board meeting, the three of us go down, we just look at the spot together.
The other location would be on the south side. On the south side, because it's a flat concrete from the U-Drive, it's flat, can be positioned in that area as well, where the old low ramp has seen up concrete. That can be positioned there as well, too, because it's easy accessible if anybody sees it, and if you put parts of wheelchair, it's all flat, you don't want to put parts of wheelchairs steps, and your pad right there, they can turn around on, even, go right back. And then there's that side as well. Yeah, I can get a femur on that one, too. So I wanna get a feel for what you guys would want for labeling. It's back here in the back, I brought it up. As you can see, it does say USA, US mail on front, that would be a thick plate over top of that, covering that up where it'll say US mail with that mailbox there. So it's got your parcel down below, your regular mail on top, and your retrieve on the backside of both areas.
What do you think, gentlemen, what you want to say?
Penny, she gave, she got some ideas from other courthouses and stuff like that. They were pretty general. One's typically New, and I think the other one's Clinton, I believe. Still got that. Correct.
Well, it'll depend on where it actually goes to be placed, too. Correct, because if it's not placed over here, the signage might have to be different on the side or in front.
Correct, I mean, I figured that I would put the signage on both, on all, place all three sides, where it's accessible by the public, that way they see it, whereas, and I was thinking something where it very boldly states, and clearly states that this Carroll County Courthouse, collection box only, no US mail, or however you guys wanna word it, I don't really need to be.
Where in the world is Kia Ha Ha County?
It's just one of my, just, I, well, Google, I mean, it's very, very hard to come up with, to get those kind of pictures, because most of everything is for like ballot collection boxes that you, that you come up with.
We have a, we have a seal for the courthouse, gentlemen. Like, when you guys have some Carroll County, I'd like to see that on the side.
Okay, yeah, that's why I was saying.
Collection box. That's what I'd like to see, put it on both sides and on the front door, down there on the bottom. Now, I don't think we need both compartments, because everybody's gonna use it like they think they are, the tops will fill up pretty quick. You don't like on the end?
Yeah, correct. I, I would think that depending on which department's their busy season and how many parcels they get, which has, you know, I mean, you had that whole entire bottom chamber for the bigger packages and stuff like that, too, so I'd like just the one area. Just the one area.
Comment?
Yeah, as far as placement, I would really like to see it on the pad, on the, that concrete pad where he's talking about, is pretty good size. I'd like to.
The door side here?
Yeah, I'd really like to see it close to there for collection purposes, closer for us to, so that we don't have to walk all the way down there every day, because we'll have to check it every day. And also, I think placing it up here at the courthouse, near the door, will further discourage people from mistaking it for US mail, whereas if you put it down, it's more likely to mistake it for.
Where abouts, south side?
Away from the courthouse, I mean, if you put it in the drive where somebody can access.
Well, no, I was, I was right there before the steps, where that metal ramp used to be, putting it somewhere in that vicinity of an area to where I could still get the camera views on.
The closer it is to the courthouse door entrance, the less likely they are to mistake it for US.
And that's the reason why I'm trying strategically to place it somewhere where cameras are able to hit it, something, issue was to go on, or somebody was supposed to do, do something that we're supposed to do, drop off something that we're supposed to.
I was looking once, I used traction, and I run through more areas, I mean, I think I.
Oh, so that's why you're against it.
That's why I wrote it.
Where does Clinton County have theirs?
I don't know, I don't know exactly where they have it.
North side of courthouse, right to the right of the entrance.
Well, plus, you know, there's safety issues either for somebody putting something that I'm supposed to, plus for people carrying that parcel back, they can be, you know, closer to the door.
Most of it, it is.
Typical New Counties is mounted right outside the front doors of the city county, the county building. It's mounted on the building, there's smaller drop boxes.
And most of them, like, we're using Google, either they're mounted right next to the front door, or they're mounted to the building as well, as in, I mean, they're right there on top of the building, so they're not out in the open very much, most of them are right against the building.
I'd like to see it on the south side. People can probably walk up, or they can use that drive to bring it up, walk up and drop it off, because we still got the handicap over here parking, so I'd rather see it on the south side than have anybody complain about being there for a wheelchair, handicap.
And also with that, too, see, with that being over on the south side as well, and most times, people are wanting to use this, it'll be in the evening, after hours, you have those parking spots that are right there as well, too, that gives them, if they have a van that has to have the draw flip or something like that.
So I'd really put it on the south side. Still against it, but I'd rather have it on the south.
Let's walk out there right after the meeting.
Sounds good.
We'll be looking for it.
Alright, that will be available.
That will be decided at the next meeting, then, or?
We'll, they'll make the decision.
So labeling?
Sorry, go ahead.
I do think that we need to specify that, you know, no cash payments, no cash.
Yeah.
They're gonna throw it in, you're not responsible.
Not responsible.
That was on pretty much every box, I salted.
Drop it at your own will, I like to see.
So are we good with, so just get the in-longs, Carroll County collection box, and get the Carroll County in-long, no cash, deposits, anything others you want, want to put something together, so that way, because I need you guys to hear. Bear box?
Can you take it like the American flag, too?
Okay, alright, okay. And then, then we guys, I'll come back at the next meeting, get it all approved, and I'll have that. So the next one was on the Jeff Hopkins' office.
What?
Jeff Hopkins' office.
Did you do it?
Yeah. He had me go up there and see if I could fix some of the holes, like where the screws have been put in the holes and stuff like that. And I started, I started doing that, one of the things that I had to stop, because there is significant issues with the plaster attached to the wall in that side of the building, where I believe that it's beyond like my time, not really my ability, to be able to fix it, because you see that one picture where I removed a big chunk of it, that goes underneath the window seals and everywhere else, it would be best, and that's small of the location, and in the entryway as well, which is up on the second pamphlet staple, that those are just knocked down, the plaster's knocked down, and pin up drywall and fix it that way. By the time you pay someone that specializes, if you still find them in plaster repair, they're gonna have to knock down pretty much all of it anyway, just to fix the plaster. So if you pin up, drywall, knock it down, pin up drywall, it'd be gold.
So what's your suggestion to repair this?
My suggestion is, is first, get some estimates and see what contractors think, so I can present that to you guys. So I guess initially, for me presenting this, I just wanted to give permission from you guys to get estimates, if that's okay, and see what they think. But my personal opinion, dealing with plaster, and since my house was built in eighteen ninety, it's easier to knock down the plaster and then hang the drywall, it's the last, just a lot easier.
Well, my opinion is, is that, except him coming up to ask for any of the estimates, if he some, sees something in the courthouse that needs fixed, estimates are free, loans are free, then he can present them all at once. So now, when he presents this, now we gotta wait another three weeks, then we have to go through the estimates, and we gotta wait another two weeks. I think, like, just give him permission, but if he sees something and he can prepare it, he's an estimate, he can do. Give me permission to give you estimates.
I think that's fine, we're good, Mark.
I think, great, that's also possible fixes for it, you know, yes. Put it in the estimate.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, two or three different. I like them to cause all this.
Correct, I, I, absolutely, that's one thing.
It might fall off, too, in a couple of years, so. Might have a lesion there.
Correct. Yeah, I don't want to make this move in better, anything over something that's, or a problem.
My town here, we've completely done the roads on the area, all the light up above, all the columns, and the stairs, and all that, do very little plaster. I can't remember hardly any, other than just put a patch and paint over.
Well, and that's why I was kinda hoping when I went up there to his office, and so I was really, opened up the blinds, you could really see the wall where it's bubbled out in a lot of areas, and it's just, especially down around the windows, it's all bubbled out, and which raises into other people's requests for work to be done in their area or new area, that vibration is only gonna make it worse.
So I'm ready to fall off, someone touched your spot.
Yeah, well, some of it's like cracked open, because it's expanding so much.
I'm gonna show my age here, but I've been here a long time, and I remember when the courthouse was painted and the different offices, that they did an office at a time, and they did a lot of patch work, they used that tape or whatever you put over the cracks, and then sanded it down and painted, so that's the only time I can remember, and that's been.
Nineteen eighty?
Was it plaster then? I, I would say it was the late nineties, if I was guessing.
Yeah, because I remember Cheryl had some plaster work done in my council, my first year council, I had a couple of years.
And for some of the cracked areas, that's what I used, too, I used a bit of the tape and stuff like that, so that way, you know, absorb with the expansion and, you know, contraction with heat and cold and stuff like that.
And Cheryl would let us put any nails in, she had to do it, and she had specifically a way to do it that would not make a hole this big once you tap the nail. Some came out this big.
I said, give me some estimates.
Oh, there?
I did estimates on somebody's plaster, because I don't wanna really take the paint away from the courthouse, and also the drywall.
Oh, there?
I suppose the interior walls were almost really not like the judges on the front. I heard anybody goes, no, it was the side.
Well, they have to remove all the plaster for the drywall, all the loose shit out there.
They call the trim one from there? Which that trim's, not that hard to take down.
Right.
As long as you take, as long as you take to be careful, I mean, trim's gonna be really easy to take down. I know you work here when the.
He was here when I went.
We, we got.
Okay, so, and last few things, real quick, so tree on the east side, the maple, we got hit, Steve was here with me that night while the city was cleaning it up, the tree's gonna die, I mean, it took such a big hit, and Steve wanted me to get some estimates. So I got four different estimates, from local and even one from Lafayette, just to see how their prices vary. The best estimate I got was the twelve hundred dollars, that is complete, take down, stump removed, clean up on that maple tree.
Fill in the whole one you're done, that part that you're done?
That was not. I will not write down on here, I know that we talked about it, but I'll double check, but it was the tree technicians.
You have two estimates, is that what?
I got four, four total estimates.
Two of them were eighteen hundred dollars, one?
Twenty-two hundred, and the last one is twelve. And of these, like Smith, I didn't really talk to him much further after he gave me his quote. Tate, he was insured, but not bonded, so, but with tree technicians, they are insured, they're licensed, bonded, they have all paperwork, documentation to back them up.
You have the money in your ground, keep it.
I have some stuff around, but I can, I can cover the cost on that.
You have to make sure you watch your budget, because you've been having the yard mowed due, because I know you've been visiting, that's eating a lot of your budget.
Yep.
I'm making a motion to go with the tree technicians to have the tree removed, if you guys wish to have it removed, it's kind of an isolated one.
Is that the one that's not bonded?
No, 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 that's the very last sheet, man.
Are you sure that it's going to be, it's gonna die if we don't?
From the Tates and, Tates and the tree technicians, that's what they, that's what they told me.
Yeah, this is damage, this is maybe a damage. Don't have the part, take it up, and see there, you got another tree on that side of the tree.
Many years as a kid.
And we can always replace that tree with another tree later on, once we, we can have some kind of.
Just take a stump out of there, and bring up like that, and put, get it chirped down and immediately plant it.
Okay, is that my motion, Steve?
Yes. Go ahead and do with the twelve hundred dollar estimate, the tree technician.
Motion sent him to go with the twelve hundred dollar tree technicians. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, and last but least, is the elevator. You asked me to get a breakdown of timeframe and to get in writing when they would have this job completed. Email me back with the breakdown of costs, and two to, two and a three-year plan with everything, and he also emailed me back stating that he has received confirmation with the power unit, it can be completed by late September, early October, if we agree to move forward on the power unit.
I think we need to, and I believe we talked, I think we already have the money, we don't need to.
We have that money, and you can have this year, we don't have to go for an additional for the council, so that one's canceled.
So we can probably do both things at once, the thirty-two thousand, so you made it, since there's a hundred thousand.
Then we have sixty.
We have sixty. We'll still, we can, that's thirty-two, thirty-two, four oh six, full price, right?
Yep, thirty-two, four oh six.
It's power.
I think we can just pay it all at once.
That's your fault, I'm sure no one's fault.
Be done with it.
I was thinking that you wanted some down, then.
Well, it was fifty percent down, and fifty percent after completion of work, and it's like sixteen thousand, two hundred and three. Sixteen thousand, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Sixteen thousand, two hundred and three.
We do that, do we? They want half their. They want some before they start, some at the end, but, the only thing I know that we can use, that government uses, I know, does pay, I know, it's like a mobilization fee for building a bridge or something, or to move equipment in, they pay for that. That's true.
I, I looked at it as, they're used to people, you know, paying the full bill, so they want at least half of it down, but I can ask them that as well, too.
State doesn't want to, if, even if it's the government, you know, they're, they're gonna get paid, the money's in, where it should be a one conclusion, for the one conclusion.
I'll reach back up then.
Unless they, unless it's a small enough company, they don't have the money to buy the power unit, they have to use our money to get it.
Well, that may be, but if we still don't wanna get in trouble with state or the council.
And, and the editor, I mean, you can refer to the office to say that the money's there, it's appropriate, and it doesn't have to be, that should be enough.
I think we need to get it started.
Okay, I, so I guess to not drag this on to another meeting, just to get verification, so if they say that it is fifty and fifty, don't talk about it. Don't talk about it. Don't talk about it, okay. Get away, don't pay. Alright, I just wanna make sure that.
Does anybody need a motion on that?
Yes, yes.
Motion to approve the new, what's it called?
Power units.
Power unit for the elevator, can you say it through, it does get it?
It can't.
It can get it, it can get it.
Okay, so we're gonna motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. And just get all of them when you guys done.
Next item of the business.
There are two ordinances that were discussed in the last meeting.
Uh, Jed, we got one thing ahead of you. Nancy Wood, Nancy Wood, okay?
That's the seventy.
No, you're right. Would you please outturn Nancy Wood?
Huh?
Hi, uh, again, we're getting to September seventeenth, the week of September seventeenth, where I'd like to have a table display for Constitution Week in the rotunda, if that's possible.
Sure. Okay, we got a motion to approve the display and the return to Constitution Week. One second, second, all in favor, say aye. We got that, now.
Um, this is just for information. Our chapter is also cleaning up the Samuel Melroy Monument.
Uh huh.
Where there's weeds and bushes and tree sprouts and some small trees. And we're kind of presently working on that.
Wonderful. I haven't been, I haven't visited in two or three years probably, so I don't know the.
It's, it's overgrown.
It's overgrown. But we appreciate you maintaining that out there. Does everybody know where it is? It's up there on the hill. On the old way to Camden, but you can't go through there anymore.
Is that where it's from?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, David McCann.
Good morning, Drew.
Good morning. I just wanted to give a little update on the Centennial Monument, or better known as the Samuel Melroy Monument, which is, uh, being taken care of greatly, uh, or greatly, or taken care of the monument by the pillars of American heritage. This is on private land. It's probably the most important, or one of the most important monuments in Carroll County. Uh, this is the area of Carroll County's cradle of pioneer settlement. Um, and Samuel Melroy himself was, had a farm there. Uh, was probably the most prominent citizen of Carroll County, pioneer citi- citizen of, uh, back in eighteen twenty-six when he established. The monument itself is, uh, was erected in nineteen sixteen, so it's the centennial of the state, uh, statehood for Indiana. Um, and, uh, it's on private land. Uh, was owned by, uh, Mary Van, Van Sickle, uh, she died a few years ago. And, uh, it is now in foreclosure by the Fifth Third Bank. Um, it's in jeopardy in a sense because it's, it's always been on private land. When it was on Melroy's land, uh, people, uh, just assumed it was open, free to the public forever. And, uh, private owners continued that way. Um, Mary Van Sickle was very interested in, uh, uh, history. And so she, uh, she allowed, uh, development. We, we put in a, the HHI, uh, Heartline Heritage, I forgot I had mentioned that I'm with Heartline Heritage, HHI. And, uh, we, we put in a couple of extra trails off the Monocentral Trail to, to the monument. And it's difficult keeping up, and I'm so glad that the DAR is working to do that. Um, I, I don't have any requests or anything at this point, uh, but I just wanted to give you a bit of an update of, we're concerned that it could be gone to sale or something like that. And new owners would not, uh, honor the, uh, the cost of allowing the public access to the, uh, to the monument.
Jed, in a situation like that, where the history of a hundred plus years of public use of having access there, is there any kind of a?
Grandfather clause?
Grandfather clause understood easement through there for that?
I think it's too late to do that. It, it's bankruptcy now.
Yes.
I mean, to, to acquire a, an easement by prescription, you have to, it has to be adverse.
Adverse, that's what I would.
Yeah, so it was, it was by permission of the previous owner, it would be adverse. So, uh, I, I made notes here. Um, I think, uh, I don't know if the presenters here have, have a suggestion if, uh, if there's a state agency that might, who's support might be enlisted to acquire the easement or by some designation, uh, make it so that it can't be, uh, sold off by the bankrupts and trusts. I was gonna ask, ask.
It's foreclosure, not bankrupts.
Is it a foreclosure, not a bankruptcy?
Uh, yeah, it's foreclosure, excuse me.
Okay, foreclosure, okay. Is it in, it's, it's in Carroll County, so. We should be able to look that up.
Yeah, it's foreclosure, yeah.
Okay.
Also, is it, did, did that happen with Mary Van Sickle? They owned it, or did it go with from a previous owner? Because it, the, um, the statute, I grew up out there, that's why I was wondering. I mean, did, was, did Laramore's have it out there too? Before the Van Sickles?
Did the.
Did the Laramore's?
Oh, yes, yeah.
So wouldn't it kind of follow through maybe? If there was another owner that.
If there was never an easement created in writing, it's, there's no.
I was just wondering if there was, I mean, if there could be.
Uh, well, yeah, the Laramore's also the previous owner. But you're, uh, if it's in foreclosure, or.
Same, same, same.
Same difference, probably, yeah.
So we need to kind of get into that while it's still in the court's hands. It might be possible to do something before, um, it might be something that, I don't know, if there's a interested buyer that we don't know about. So my suggestion is that you give your contact information to the auditor. I can look up the foreclosure, uh, in the court records and see what we can do to all, uh, stay in touch with.
Well, that would be good, yes.
Okay. Okay. How, how, how much of a site, is it, is it access as well as the site of the?
Well, we have a little map here with that.
Okay, okay. Does, does the auditor have that map?
No, I don't think so. This was just created a few days ago.
If you could go next door and, and ask them to make a copy of that.
I don't know whether the commissioners would wanna see this too.
It's two point six acres.
David, isn't that still County Road running right up to it?
Well, it's a, it's a question mark. It's Old Camden Road and it ends at the top of the hill. Uh, runs right past it. Um, and, uh, actually, maybe you wanna show this on the. We were thinking the city on it, uh, Old Camden Road, but the beacon doesn't show any, uh, beacon doesn't show who owns it, it's just like to the center of the road practically.
The parcel includes that whole big triangle.
Well, uh, here's Old Camden Road right here. Here's the Monocentral High Ridge Trail, which is, uh, in development and with the city's, uh, grant, next to the trails, uh, grant. Uh, here is, uh, the Van Sickle property, consists two point six three acres. And the monument is right here, right where that doubt is. Uh, Centennial Monument, same thing as Melroy Monument. Uh, and so, uh, this would be a, a point here which really doesn't affect the house over here. The house is, uh, probably gonna be demolished. But it's a, uh, less than a quarter acre, um, that would. HHI owns this property up here with the trail and the, like Centennial Plaza and so forth. This is the private land here.
Where is the logical place for access to the?
Well, off of the trail, we created, uh, two new trails, one from here, that kind of goes like this and goes over here. Another one over here comes down over here. So, uh, there's no parking right there really, uh, along Old Camden Road. Um, and the real parking is going to be developed over in other places. Uh, we might have some excess, or ADA parking up here, I don't know. It's, uh, Mary Van Sickle was very interested in history, very interested in preserving this. And, uh, she was, uh, we were all set to, uh, she was gonna donate it. We had figured out, we were ready to go out there with survey markers and figure out what she was gonna donate. And then we came up with some complications, some complications in her family and so forth, and it, it fell through. And, uh, um, so, and even the, uh, her daughter is, is interested in preserving it. But it's, it's in the foreclosure now, and so, uh, can be.
Was it bank foreclosing on?
Yes, Fifth Third Bank.
Well, we'll just let you and Jed figure out, if you need to come back to us, come back to us.
Okay.
Alright, alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate both of your presentations. Well, Jed, it's up to you now.
Okay, there are two ordinance, those actually, uh, locally were discussed at the last meeting. And I've got a script for you, so if you may want to adopt these in the same meeting. Uh, the first one, Jed, I'm gonna ask you to look at the, uh, because it's number, number four, the, uh, order. Ordinance establishing the, creating the COVID nineteen response non-reverting fund. This is for, so the funds that come back reimbursed to the county, going to this non-reverting fund, if they're not all spent out by the end of the year, they, it doesn't go in in general, it's made as identified. So, uh, the procedure is that you, this is really, I think it's a requirement of the Hairs Act, uh, and you need to do it. Uh, so, um, so the first one you got there would be ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh four. And I've given you a script there, if, uh, if you wanna get started on that, if you have questions, uh, we can do it at a point where you can start. The motion in a second, then if you got discussion or questions, you can do it.
The movement, you want it in number twenty twenty, you read that title only?
Okay, the movement second of the ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh four, be read by title only. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, now the auditor reads.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh four is an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Carroll, creating a COVID nineteen response non-reverting fund.
The chair entertains a motion to consider ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh four on the same day as its introduction.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, all in favor of that motion, please say aye. So the motion having carried unanimously, the chair entertains a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash oh four. Second, uh, the motion has been made and seconded, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh four is to adopt.
The second ordinance is the ordinance that actually, uh, Ken Earl's firm, uh, submitted for, uh, the internal controls. And, uh, vets found that the ordinance, I reformatted it so that it can be adopted by, uh, the board. And, um, it would be number oh five, is that correct?
I think, I was, I was wondering if it went four, I think it's three, I think you named it last week.